I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united in civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Mayor Manning, Brennaman, O'Hara, Randall?
Yes.
Here.
Here.
And Monahan and Kiel are absent from this.
Do we have any motions to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote you think? All right, do we have a motion for the minutes from January 4th, 2022?
We think a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from 1 for 2022.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right. Let's move to the bills.
Motion to approve Bill's ass of that.
Second. All right, discussion, questions? All right, all vote? Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Monahan.
Please call Jones, Monahan. Jones, Brennaman?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
And O'Hara.
All right, next item we got is public comments. Anybody from the public would like to make any comments on any of those items? We've got a couple of minutes per speaker, so now's your chance. All right. None, so then we're going to move to visitors. We got Stephanie Bents with Southern Hoppers.
Yes.
Mayor Manning and council members, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight and to submit the annual report on the Dacresland libraries. We are currently working on our strategic plan, and this plan will guide the library in decision-making in the next one to three years. And as part of that process, the library director, Jody Fick, has been very careful to include the communities of rural west in the planning process, including Hartford. There is an online survey, and some of you were approached by me before the meeting to participate in the survey, and we would like the council and you too, Mayor Manning, to also take part in the survey. I will send a link to you, but I was told today also that it appears on the Chamber of Commerce's website and in their Facebook page. So that's another way to participate in the survey. It takes about 10 minutes there, and I am so excited that Hartford was chosen as one of the focus group communities too as part of this planning process. That will be Tuesday, February 8th at the Senior Center. I think it starts at 6:30. And I will send information, I think you'll end up with an invitation from the director to participate in that focus survey too.
Good. If, how long do you expect your process to take as you're kind of going through evaluating everything when things over? Is it weeks, months that you're going to be working on things, or is it?
We're in phase two.
In phase two?
The first phase one was gathering data. Phase two is gathering public data and hearing from our constituents for what they would like to see. After this phase, which will end mid-February, they'll begin to write the plan and should be ready to go by May.
Good, how are things going down at the library here in town?
Well, as I'm sure everybody's aware, we took kind of a hit due to COVID. People just did not feel comfortable taking their kids and their families places where they would encounter COVID. But we have tried to make it better through expanded access where folks can visit the library during hours that were closed. And I think that has helped somewhat, but we do need to get the word out more that that is available. And then we weren't able to staff it because people couldn't socially distance. The staff couldn't socially distance in the small space. After the vaccines came out in March, we began staffing it again, and that has helped too. We look forward to seeing the numbers climb if the number of COVID cases goes back down. Can we do a brisker business during the summer than we do during the winter?
Sure, sure. Good, good. Any questions for second?
It's been a pleasure serving this community.
Thank you. We look forward to that survey. Thank you. All right. We're going to jump into our hearings. The first one we have up is a 705 hearing. It's the first reading of Amendment 723, amendments to zoning regulations on accessory structures. So that's folks planning to go in here tonight, so that's great. Any other background you'd like to give on this, Tricia?
No, just mainly what I put in the pack, because the planning zoning board has been working on this for a few weeks now. Discussion started with, we had a variance hearing for a gentleman that was putting up an extremely small structure. It was one that was short, I think it was like only 12 cubic square feet, you know. It, we had started the discussion, does this really qualify as an accessory structure? And should we have to go through the permitting process? And should we make it that it has to have the setback requirements? And so they started their discussions, and it was determined that extremely small structures like this, and we came up, you know, they did a little research on the different sized buildings. They came up with basically anything that's under 25 square feet would be exempt from this. I'm trying to think of the height, and under eight feet high would be exempt from it. So basically, ordinance 723 makes changes to our zoning regulations that would exempt those structures from, you know, our zoning regulations, are from, basically from, from maybe. They would still not be allowed to be put into drainage ways or whatnot, but they wouldn't have to meet the setback requirements as far as, you know, so far away from your house, your structure, the height requirements, things like that. So like I said, when they look at it more as, and I agree, you know, these are things you're going to store your tools in, you're not going to walk into them. So they shouldn't really fall under like an actual building that should be subject to the building codes. You're not going to, they're just a place to store your stuff, your cushions, patio cushion, your shovels, stuff like that.
Any questions on it, or any motions on the first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 723.
Second.
Further discussion? Has anybody who's in any comments on any of this or this item in particular? Unless Sarah?
This year they came forward was a cabin. I mean, it was something I have in my garage. It's a plastic four feet wide by, you know, 16 inches deep, and he was asking for a variance on it, so that isn't necessary. It was a cabin, a bookshelf.
Just kind of summed it up, say, on that day.
Yeah.
And we shouldn't have to, you know.
Yeah, it's something you could maybe pick up and move, but what we're looking at is more of a stationary structure.
Yep. Yep. That's good.
Tricia, just got to ask, is Mark Monahan's not here? At what point do you need to permit to move dirt?
We do have an excavating permit. I'd have to look at the cubic yards, but it's so many cubic yards, and then you need a permit to actually move around dirt.
The 25 square feet or less?
I think it's 50, I think, something like that. I would have to double check that.
You wonder how it matched up to this, or?
The same, you're going to need your 25 square feet of dirt.
No, it's over that.
Permit, it might be the same problem that we'd have to look at solving this time.
Right, yeah, it was less than that of that. I know it's over that.
We need to move dirt to put that 25 square foot building in.
Yeah, because, I mean, we talked about having to get the grading permits. We didn't want to have to do it for like gardens or whatnot.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, motion in the second? All vote? Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And O'Hara?
Yes.
So we'll have a second reading on that coming up. Next one we have is our 710 public hearing. It's first reading in order at 724, rezone the north half of block six, block seven of Western Madison.
So this came about, we received, you know, the city received applications from Dakota Cannabis. They want to purchase lot six. We've already approved them putting a cultivation and manufacturing facility on the south half. But the way our cannabis regulations state is that it can only go in community commercial. Well, that whole lot's owned light industrial, so they would need to rezone that north half in order for a dispensary to go in there. So this, their application for the dispensary got put on hold. It went to the planning and zoning board last week. They approved the rezone of the north half to keep the whole campus intact. And so now, as you know, rezonies have to go as an ordinance, so it comes before the city council first reading tonight, and there'll be a second reading two weeks from now.
So why not rezone the whole lot to community?
Because, once again, the way we worded our cannabis one, manufacturing and cultivation can go in light industrial. So you'd have to rezone one of the other half, yeah, if you want to utilize a whole lot. And maybe, you know, we had a little bit of discussion, maybe we need to look at maybe our regulations on cannabis, because this area, like I said, we don't allow dispensaries, but there are other retail establishments in light industrial, because, you know, our zoning regulations allow them. Maybe we need to look in the future or something like that, allowing on the light industrial, but.
Do you still sell on light industrial or not?
Yeah, you can sell. I mean, like I said, we have, you know, like Blissby's is out there that's on light industrial. I mean, our others, our regulations for light industrial allows retail facilities, but the way we worded our cannabis ordinance, we said dispensaries could only be in community commercial. And like I said, maybe that's something we want to look at changing in the future.
Maybe it's in community commercial or?
Yeah, because, like I said, we do have retail out in light industrial sections, so just our regulations weren't worded this way for cannabis.
Any motions?
So I just want to keep going, the dispensary's separate from the road, somebody here?
Yeah, we'll have it completely, they'll have their own in and out entrance.
On the highways.
Yeah.
Two separate buildings. State law actually doesn't even allow a dispensary to be in the same building as a cultivation or a manufacturing, so they have to have two separate buildings.
This is the first reading?
Yeah, this is supposed to be first reading. It's got to go through a second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of 724. I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All right, any vote? Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Brennaman?
Yeah.
All right, next one, we've got a 715 public hearing for special alcoholic beverage application for backdoor garden. And special application out there for that, any?
Ricky emailed me this morning, she had a conflict, so she couldn't make it tonight, but basically the application's in your packet. She already holds malt beverage and wine license, so she's allowed to apply for a special permit to sell off premise. And she, there is an event at St. George's, she wants to, it's called the St. George Art Appreciation Event, and that's where she wants to have a special permit for us. I'll let that, it'll be February 20th from 2 to 5.
Yes.
Church wine deal.
Churches already got wine, I don't know.
I see nothing wrong with this. Stewardship drive maybe, tie that up.
I'll make a motion to approve the beverage application for backdoor gardens.
Second.
Other discussion? All right, we'll vote. Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
I'm sure we're about a minute early for our 720 public hearing, so we're going to go down to Resolution 2022-1, transfer sports complex funds to general fund.
So in our books, the sports complex fund had, basically has, that money had its own fund number. It wasn't part of the general fund, that's the way our accountant set it up. Like, rec trail is already in our general fund, but not the sports complex. So since we are now developing this park and rec board, everything's going to be filtered through them on the general. We just need to transfer the money from the sports complex fund, so we can close that down and put that in the general, so that can be utilized by the park board. So that's cleaning up that.
It doesn't tie to this, but will we be doing similar with the bike trail and?
So like, the bike trail, it's already in the general fund?
Oh, no, yeah, I wasn't listening, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just this one needs to be moved and closed, so then they'll both be in the general fund and be utilized by the park and rec board.
I don't know about my bad dad.
All right, do we have any motions on Resolution 2022-1?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-1. I'll second.
All right, there's no further discussion, all vote? Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
All right, now we move to our 720 public hearing, transfer the liquor license from Hart T. Stock to Brown Job LLC.
So the Hart T. Stock has sold, and new owners, and they're going to be operating under the name Brown Job Inc. Basically, we would need to transfer the liquor licenses, and they have three of them under their name, transfer from the old owners to the new owners, so that's what this hearing is for.
I make motion to approve the transfer of our license from Hart T. Stock to Brown Job LLC.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All vote? Brennaman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And O'Hara?
Yes.
Good job bringing the old lady back.
Bad.
Car wash membership's coming soon.
There you go. This wasn't the time to start after. Geez, whiz.
There's never a bad time to argue.
I know, I know. I'm retired, so I don't care.
You're going to be washing your car off.
I will.
All right, sounds good. We're going to move over to reports. Chief Horn, we got the first one up, was it there?
Good evening. I'll start with the, we sent you guys the year-end report for '21. Listed some of the accomplishments we had on there. Couple of big ones, we did receive that donated SCV at Kill Station, which is really going to help us out. Couple grants for radios in addition to the COVID relief funds that we got for some more. Fire prevention week at the elementary and middle school, a bunch of the daycares we did, and then our community safety day with the live fire demonstration, which was pretty well-received as well. Calls for service, we did 394 calls for '21, which is a little bit of a decrease from last year, but it's still a 400 call average for the last two years, so still seeing some pretty high numbers. We really slowed down in November and December, but that's okay. 141 calls were in the city, 97 of those were EMS calls, and then everything else is kind of spread out between everything else. Also gave you the list of the current, or the new 20, I should say, 2022 board members on there, I put the regular on there, but right here. Any questions with last year?
Only the businesses have been accepting the Knox lock.
Really?
Fair?
Hit or miss. I think we still have some work to do, maybe getting some compliance with that, so we'll try to work on that a little bit more this year.
Maybe be a chamber topic at a meeting or something to have these guys come and talk about that maybe.
That'd be a great idea.
Would you do that?
You know, that might be, might be, I'll get a few together.
What seems to be the biggest factor, hesitation?
Um, cost probably.
Cost, yeah.
I figure, I heard a couple with the cost, yeah.
Yeah.
In the long run, though, look at that, and time wasted, and safety, and everything else.
Yeah.
But I know that's hard, it's a difficult point to get across.
Yeah, the, you know, in some places if they have fire alarms, but there's no way for us to get in, you know, or wait for a key holder or break down the door, and, you know, that gets to do a kind of predicament for us, because we don't want to break doors down and stuff like that unless we have to. But yeah, we still have to find out what's going on inside so that your business doesn't burn down. So, I mean, it's a, you know, it's kind of catch 22, but that's, I think, one of the, one of the biggest reasons. And then the multifamily dwellings, if we can't get into the building, can't help someone who is laying on the floor of their apartment or whatnot, has called for help, so we have to wait for someone with a key to come and buzz in, and try to buzz someone else, and et cetera, et cetera. There's definitely a lot of advantages to having them.
We all know seconds count.
All right, for the month of December, 25 calls, 11 in the city. Our January training is CPR, and on Saturday, we're doing an ice water rescue class, so that should be fun. And then our combined training, we used our airbags for extrication lifting vehicles and heavy objects and stuff. And then a little highlight, we had seven members of the department teach CPR to the high school seniors as part of their requirement for graduation, so.
Any questions?
See, we also had an action item on there too, or?
Yeah.
It's like we just talked about this.
This is your budgeted request, yearly request?
Yeah, we budgeted $28,000 for operating.
Yeah, and then we, the other is the film.
Equipment.
Equipment.
Yeah.
So when they purchase, and then new piece of equipment, they can request those funds?
So this is $28,000 operating?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 operating budget for Hartford Fire, $28,000.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in the vote? Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
And O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Matt.
All right, we've got Amy with the Chamber and Economic Development Report.
My information is in the packet. A few things I'd like to add is, last Tuesday, when we had our marketing meeting, we had an intern from Tri Valley. She was interested in learning more about marketing, so we invited her to that, and working with West Central as well to get some additional interns to come in. We do have our mixer at the end of this month, January 25th, at 7:30 at Central State's Manufacturing, so if you're able to, please attend. On the development foundation side, had a great meeting this morning with ISG and their team to go over the city-wide master plan, and things to look forward to here in February, when we can get a date to work with the school, to get more input from the public. And then, let's see, oh, continuing to meet and have many, many emails and phone calls with prospective businesses for our area, so, yeah, it's been fun.
Good, any questions for him? Thank you. All right, we've got our city engineer report.
Evening, folks. So since last meeting, we had actually quite a few plats that have came through in the last, the last month, or we had quite a few that we went through. I think we've got actually all of those approved, some iterations back and forth, slight modifications that need to be corrected. Also went through the West Central School District, some miscellaneous improvements there, and reviewed their, their dividend to that as well, and had no comments and no concerns. The big project that we're working on, 6th and Mont Utility Road Reconstruction, we're nearing completion on the design of that. Sidewalks, as we kind of indicated at the last meeting, we really focused on that in the three locations to maintain that continuous walkway. A couple of those will require easements, so we'll start going through. What we really want to develop is really a drawing to indicate, okay, what's actually going to go there? Why do I need an easement? So that we can have those sit downs and go through those particular easements for those sidewalks. So in some park wrapped up, the wastewater, we did prepare as requested, the proposal attached, and then as, as Amy had indicated, we had that community development plan, that's really coming along well. There's a lot of visuals on that, which would be really exciting to show to the public and get their comments and their tweaks that we'll finalize before we get that plan, but those are really coming together well. They've been putting in a lot of work in the last couple of months, getting that put together. And the downtown plan is nearing finalization as well, so that's some really exciting stuff to look at. Any questions on that? No?
Good.
So as requested, we did put together the design proposal. I'll kind of walk you through that here, based on that cover letter, we did actually attach the EJ-CVC document, which is the Engineering Joint Construction Documents, sorry for that. So it's the standard document that we utilize. This is actually, so based on the preliminary engineering report, directed off of that, the items in here, flow rates and things like that come directly from the preliminary engineering report. So it's really documenting the U R selected option two and designing that. So that's the full plan specifications, all of the permitting that will be outlined as well. The stakeholder meetings, as we know, that that's going to be a key element to it as well. And then finally, the final drawings and specifications. Just for, for your awareness, on a project of this size, we'll actually be using our civil team for sure, our environmental engineering, our mechanical engineering, our electrical engineering, our structural engineering, our project management team, and our landscape architecture team as well for the actual facility. So those are all included in this particular scope. But this, the scope does also include the gravity collection system, not only the water reclamation facility, the new lift station and screening, the force main from the lift station to the facility, and then the facility itself. Any questions on that particular item? We did, that's a, we included that all as a lump sum item, and then we included resources planning. That's really facilitating all of the, the applications on the funding and providing that, that information to the applicable agencies. And we did isolate that out for, as a build hourly, not to exceed, just because there's, it depends on how much you actually need there and how much they, CPR will really be covering there as well, which is great. And then the survey, knowing, not knowing exactly the, all the easements that we need, we've put a, a build hourly not to exceed as well on that particular item, knowing that it could very, it could fluctuate most certainly throughout this particular project and design. The environmental permitting is put to, that's. The environmental permitting is put to that same way. Uh, we know we have the stormwater construction permit, the SWI, the N P D S permit, and the D O T permit that will be required. Um, we put that a, a build hourly not to exceed. Bid administration, which is not only providing those big documents, but we'll actually be putting that online. Um, and then the one thing that we really wanted to make sure that we were not putting that as a, uh, in the lump sum is we've discussed, uh, to some level, whether this will be a, um, a typical design bid build or whether we evaluate utilizing a C M A R process as well. And, and our project management team is happy to come and discuss those two options as we get, working through design as well. And then we have included as built as a build hourly not to exceed. Any questions on this? I know it's a lot to take in.
You mentioned D O T, I would, I asked Teresa about that this afternoon, so I didn't mention that.
Yeah. Because we'll not only have the access, we'll, so going under, underneath the interstate there, we'll, we'll have a permit crossing there as well, right? Yep.
I would say, uh, Jeremy and I spoke just briefly before the meeting. Uh, proposal of this size, with only four of us here, I think we probably will table this for tonight and take this up again at the next meeting when we got a full table, because I just think, you know, if we're going to make a decision that big, I think we need to have all of us here, you know.
Totally.
Sometimes we like to let Monahan give us the history. Wait, that's on film, I'm sure it's.
But is there any, any questions, anything that you want clearly outlined, uh, for the next meeting? Whether it's now or before the next meeting, just let us know if there's anything that you want clarification against any of the wording or anything, just to confirm that it's included.
Tell a little bit more about the, about those phases, design, build, design, bid, build. And what do those steps look like? Is this just the design portion of it?
The, so, number one is just the design portion, right? This, this, this entire, the entirety there. And we, what we outlined within the, um, kind of in that last paragraph is, we've not included resident observation and construction administration, because that will vary, that level of effort that we actually put into that, whether you actually go the design, build, bid, build process, really traditional, just like we do with all the streets. If we go with the construction manager at risk, there's going to be, they will actually be involved somewhat in the design as well. You can bring them on in at certain, uh, times in the design process, which is really good because you can vet, you're not only vetting equipment at that point in time, you're actually vetting equipment with a price associated with it. Uh, we're getting a lot of that with vendors for sure. So, i- it's not that we can't, uh, go the traditional design, bid, build, but it does allow you to take some of the uncertainty of bid day out of it, because you're actually working directly with that contractor, um, to, to price that out. What we would say is, most certainly, we still want to start moving forward on design, um, because we do have, we have, we do have some time constraints here. But what we would do, if you were going to go down that path, or at least evaluate that path, we'd put together a list of qualified C M A R companies that we would most certainly want to interview in advance, um, to review their process, their experience in regards to these type of facilities. The Harrisburg plant is C M A R, but, uh, most of them up until probably the last five years have all been designed bids.
Is on bacon, South Corritor recently.
Yep.
That's a rel-, that's a relatively recent phenomenon.
Agreed, insult to Corritor.
Right.
Yeah, we've.
Yeah, here.
Yeah, because we've done, we've done it extensively. And that's why I'd have our project management team come in, because they do a really good, um, presentation on it, because a lot of our clients want to evaluate it as an alternative, especially on like a school project. A lot of the school projects in Minnesota have been C M A R for, or minimum a C M, um, uh, process for a long time. And they have a ton of experience in regards to the contract language. It's a little bit different that you'll have with them. No way around it, there, there's still a clarity, um, that's, that's the thing that there's, there's, I think people look at C M A R and they say, well, you have, you're, you're just trusting the contractor in regards to giving you the numbers. You still will have, you will still force them, they're required, to actually build any work that they are going to self-perform. So, they will actually receive bids, and they can, their, their portion of self-perform can bid that work, but it still has to be bid, and you will bid in actual smaller scope, scopes. So, you can bid out, you know, all of your concrete, you know, just as one scope, and then they will actually receive those bids and you'll review those as well. Alongside them, and we will be right with them, with you, um, in that three-legged stool holding together a particular project.
Sure.
Yep. It, it does affect some of, uh, the, the bidding, but I think the nice part, you know, if you looked at like, um, oh, a project that you would know, oh, um, the Mini Ha Ha Highway Maintenance Facility, that was C M A R, that's when Eric Carlson did that particular project. And some nice things that, that came, we really designed the, the, the building itself, the, the pre-engineered metal building, portion of that project fairly rapidly so that we could get that package out, because we knew that there was volatility in the market in regards to those type of facilities, so they could lock in the pricing on that particular component. The same with mechanical, actually, on that particular project. And they saved upwards of six digits on, on that particular, just the mechanical portion, by locking it in when we would have probably, typical design bid build would, it would have been locked in about six months later.
Sure. So another question I have.
Yeah.
Um, this portion of it, on this, on this piece of it, you've got lump sum. And I know we had some discussions about that, I think it was with a different M J firm. Lump sum, meaning not as you go through the, like, lump sum paid up on, on this design.
Yes.
Part of this, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the other ones, they are billed hourly, but they are a not to exceed number. You know, I know with that one came, that came up with the storm shelter. Um, I think it was Mark that wanted to make sure that that was locked in and, and, uh, but he didn't want that on a time and materials basis, so we most certainly put that as, we did time and material, time and materials, but it's not to exceed, so it's a locked in number. So it does control your, yep, your exposure, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Good question.
All right. Any other questions on this tonight? Any action council would like to take on this tonight?
I may postpone this until next Sunday.
Is it the same, postpone or table is the same?
Yeah.
I have a motion.
My motion is to postpone.
Okay.
Until next meeting.
Wait a second. All right, I'm hearing a second. Other discussion?
So just to clarify the difference between table and postpone is table is indefinite, and postpone is as a date.
Can you tie, tie a date to a table? I'm going to make a motion, table is to the next meeting. I'll second, that's what I was just asking. Thank you, Mark.
And there's no discussion on a table, however, what you're saying is, is that rule order is.
Exactly. I'm just, rule order girl.
You live with it? We're going to vote that motion that's out there. Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And I'll air. All right. Before we move on to this topic completely, not necessarily to this, but I just want to comment out to the council too, and just, and talk about this briefly. Back when we looked, when we basically had all the different firms come in, and we were looking at different options for design, bidding, and building, and all this. We had a different firm that had, that we, we were going to move forward with on that. And if you remember correctly, the motion at that time was to move forward with them if we could reach an agreement. They brought an agreement to us twice, and, uh, one of the times it failed. Another time, no action was taken on it. So I'm going to ask the council, and I know we don't have everybody here tonight, do you have any appetite to reach back out to ask for a similar proposal there? We don't, there's nothing that says we have to, because, um, we did not reach an agreement at that point and couldn't. And you don't have to make that decision tonight, but, um, but I want you to reach out to me or Teresa if we need to be reaching out to the other firm or anything like that to get us any similar look. You know, think on that, sleep on that, whatever. But, um, but I want to make sure we're on record to talk about that. All right, anything else?
No, we're good.
Thank you. All right, Craig, we're going to move to your report.
Uh, for words, uh, Snare C O Project is actually open bids right now, and a bid will be open on February third. So we'll know what kind of numbers we got for that, here's for the next year's project here coming up. Um, under budget items, I did notice in there that we bought a field base in town from the same, uh, company that we bought the last one from. It's about identical to the same unit. Um, it's actually a pretty nice machine, so we do have that in our shop. Um, Highway thirty-eight lights, I've been doing some stuff on that, talking to, talked to Sioux Valley first, uh, after the last meeting, uh, Wednesday morning, I talked to, hope the guys that are out in the field, see if they were comfortable taking over the Highway thirty-eight lights and trying to get, work my way through with them guys to get everything, make sure we're on the same page with them. They told me they, they were okay with it as long as we've got some different lights up there, whatever, something to work with. I did talk to Jason, um, with Sioux Valley Electric. Um, he went to his superior. They came back saying that they would be okay doing a service agreement on the lights if we, first, I got to get permission from the state and make sure what and why did you got to use. Figure out if we're just going with one-ten or two-twenty on them. They wanted to kind of go to one-ten, but after I talked to Tom just the other day again, he said they'd be okay with two-twenty if we go that way. We have both voltages out there, so we're in good shape there. And then, uh, try to look through what was. Yeah, the lights, you know, LEDs, and then we would, um, we would have to purchase the LEDs, uh, put new ones up there, and possibly keep one on for repair, you know, for, if that's replaced one down the road. Um, as far as price-wise, right now, we are paying a, a electric fee as a service fee on those lights, because it's actually cheaper than running through the meters. So they, Sioux Valley years ago decided that'd be the proper fairway for the city to have and done. So we are already paying that maintenance fee, and they said that wouldn't change at all. So the price for electricity on that would stay the same, but with my, we would have a maintenance agreement that they would take care of the update on the lights. So after, you know, going through Sioux Valley, I talked to Travis Dress in the D O T. He was going to talk, do a little more checking on it. He says, I don't know why I wouldn't be able to, wouldn't be able to work that out and get some type of agreement going. He made the comment that they were actually changing out some lights already on the state highways to LEDs. And I said, well, maybe you'd like to make Hartford a project and change ours out. So he said, kind of laughed a bit, and said, well, I'll, I'll check on it for you. So I don't think that's going to happen, but I'm going to push a little bit more on it and see if they'll change them all for us.
Pretty suggestion, huh?
So they're going to, he's going to get back to me and let me know and get something rolling up that, um, what we're going to do with them, what, why did you got to go whatnot. It's going to take probably a couple of weeks yet just to get some more of the details worked out, and then I'll come back to you guys and say, here's what it's going to cost to change the lights to LED. Do we want to do that? Or do we want to keep paying? I mean, last time we had four lights, it was that we had fixed, and it was like over twenty-three hundred dollars. So, this way here, we'd be done with, if we have light go bad, we just call Sioux Valley, they come out that day, next day fix it, so. Just be a whole better way to go. I'm also kind of working with Sioux Valley on, kind of working as much as I dare, and trying to get them just to supply their lights or give us a good deal on them, so I'm still working at angle two with them, so. And I might, when I talk to Travis, I'll see if there's any type of cost here, changing them all with this D O T too, so. So I got some working to do with me yet, but I, I'm sure we can get this done just matter what our upfront fees are going to be. So that's where I'm at with that. The one other thing I was going to bring up, I guess, is the weather side. Um, we do have it mounted to the pole. Sioux Valley is going to come and set it, but their truck is getting serviced right now. They're hoping to have it done this week. As soon as we have a halfway decent day again, they'll come out and put the hole in, and we'll get the hose set. And we'll get all the hardware hooked up to it, uh, the rectifier, the battery boxes, all that stuff, get that done. We probably won't, we'll get the line trenched in. I don't think it's necessary to run wire on top of the ground at this time, but this type of weather, we shouldn't get any more tornadoes. So, um, when, we might give that a kind of hit to Sioux Valley if they, if they take the trencher out, we could still bust through frost with that and get that line putting out this fall, so winter, so. They might, but if not, they'll bring it over to spring, they send the trenching of course, so. We'll have it, one way or another, we'll have it up and running for torrential weather next spring.
Where's that on that?
What's that?
Where's that on the?
Uh, it's down from Nicholson, uh, lift station. Uh, Assam's new addition down there.
Yeah.
Because since it's property already set aside for something like, you know, the lift station, we got power there, so we don't have to bring any extra power or anything like that. It's going to be right there in that corner, that testing area, so. That'll cover that whole area and then some.
Have you ever looked at relocate one on Western? At the.
At Cam's there?
Yeah.
Um, right now, it's, covers all that area.
I know it also blocks the intersection, in my opinion. I mean, it.
I've noticed that.
It's really going to.
I've noticed that before. I can, um, I can do some checking on that in spring, see if we can move it somewhere.
Just looking at it.
I can, I've, I've noticed that before, so I'll just creep ahead and move it more.
Right.
But that's all I got, my report, and, but I will check and look at that with the words, see if we can find another spot that's, that we can get power to really to us, so. Unless somebody has anything for me, that's it.
Okay.
Yep.
Karen, to your report?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. I did notice an error, I had the wrong number for the sports complex on my report, but the attachment was correct. It should be the one-fifty-five that was in the resolution to transfer. I don't know where I got that number, but. Otherwise, yeah, just a reminder, if you are going to circulate petitions, we can start at the end of the month. I have them available in my office, or they're on the Secretary of State's website as well, so.
Twenty-eight, right?
Yeah. And then they have to be turned in by February twenty-fifth. End of day. So. So that's all we have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Karen? All right, perfect, thank you. All right, Teresa, we'll move to your report.
Okay, um, no updates on our bike trail or stock house projects. Um, the updates that I kind of have in the packet. We've already sent in termination notice to our current insurance company, so, um, by April first, we will be switching to put off insurance. We've got all that in, in going already. The Jan, not this coming Monday, but next Monday, January thirty-first, Kyle Christiansen, our new building inspector, quote unquote, sir, will be starting. Um, me and Nate, um, to the administrator, Lennox, will be meeting with him that morning, kind of discuss hours and days and try to work out his schedule between Hartford and Lennox. So, um, we've had a little bit of discussion with him, and some more discussion with Paul Clark. Paul's all good, he's, asked him to maybe suggest some training classes or some certification he should have, so he's looking into that, and, um, going to be working with him as soon as he starts. So we'll get that going, um, in a couple of weeks there. Just letting you know, um, last year, we, in the offices, we replaced half the offices with carpet. We budgeted this year to do the other half. That is scheduled for February twelfth, it's a Saturday, they're going to come in here and do it. We will have to tear apart all the desks and the computer and that, so there may be a few hours that Friday afternoon, that following Monday morning, where we're tearing down and putting back together. But we'll make sure we put signs on the doors and put it out in case, so the public knows whether we're open or not, but we'll get that taken care of. Um, still working on, um, giving a model or something to put on the billboard with a phone number or contact phone number, so getting some figures for that, yeah. Give you a little update on the planning and zoning meetings. Um, they are working on, we're having to update our building codes, so we're at the two thousand and eighteen, we're looking at twenty-two. So we're at the 2018, we're looking at 2021. Paul Clark went through the significant changes with them at their last meeting, so they'll be looking at organs at their next meeting, which then will ultimately come to the city council for that update, so they're working on that. Um, talked with Jeremy a little bit about the park board, looks like in a couple of weeks, we'll, maybe first week in February, hopefully we can get a meeting set for their initial organization meeting and kind of um, get that board up and going um, for the year. And then um, I did include in your packet, I, I just kind of wanted to throw out to you, you know, we contract with Minnion County for um, X number hours for nights and weekends. Um, they always send a report every month of how many hours we're contracted for and how many we actually receive. And I just wanted to show you, like, this year, we come, they, they, we always seem to get more than what they take, you know, what is in our contract. Like this year, we got 215 extra hours that we don't get charged or billed for, so, you know, it's a good relationship that we have with the county. Um, their sergeants are always good at checking quarterly with me, seeing if there's anything they need to change or do. Um, Damian's really active in the community, trying to think of ways to be engaged with the community, you know, them to get to know him, if there's things we should be doing. So I said, I, I believe that's a really good relationship we've got going with the Minnion County Sheriff's Department, so just wanted to point that out for you. Um, a couple of things that did come up, um, just then, you know, me and Craig this afternoon met with a couple of representatives from Midco. Um, about their, um, you know, project that's gonna be this summer, getting um, all their cables laid or their fiber laid within town. They're looking at April, a start date, hope to be done August sometime, if everything goes well. Um, that can be adjusted, you know, a little bit on one end or the other. Um, they are still designing, doing their design work on it, so we haven't seen those plans yet, but we'll meet with them again after they get that done. But um, initial talks, they kind of seem to have a good grasp on, you know, moving forward with the project. Um, they kind of reiterated what they said at the council meeting here. They will definitely, um, as they move from neighborhood to neighborhood, make sure they send out notices a couple of weeks ahead of times to those people that are gonna be affected. Um, when they're in that neighborhood, you know, the air to before, they'll put door hangers on their doors. They will have contact numbers so someone can contact them directly if there's any issues or problem. They'll have a coordinator in town here all the time to just handle that, those issues that come up, so. Um, yeah, so it seems like they'll have a good start and they are looking forward to moving forward this summer, so. Um, I also wanted to point out, ISG has completed our capital improvement plan, got that all updated. Michael just sent me um, it last week, the final version of it, so I did put that in your computer box for you guys to review and look at, so we've got that set for this year, so. Um, that's about all I have on the share. Questions for me? Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, with that, we move to new business, Tiff for tax increment financing presentation. Tom Timber.
Good evening. Um, I'll try and give you kind of a general overview of the Tiff. Um, if you get involved with it, you'll find there's a lot more details that will come down a little, but this, the idea tonight is just to kind of introduce the topic to you. I know that Teresa's uh, been approached about whether Hartford would be uh, interested in working through a project uh, with the Tiff district, uh, that something moved to you. Um, so I thought, or she thought it'd be a good idea to just introduce the topic. Uh, they have some members of planning and zoning here as well because they're intimately involved in uh, creating the Tiff district and then also developing the plan that's ultimately adopted by the city council, but it's created and uh, put together by planning and zoning, working with the developer that would be in, involved in the project. In a nutshell, a Tiff is one of the few economic development tools that South Dakota allows local communities to do to attract businesses um, to their communities. Uh, the, the idea behind a Tiff is to utilize tax revenues from a project um, to pay for infrastructure improvements that are necessary to uh, serve the area. The statutes in South Dakota under uh, chapter 11 dash 9, which is part of the planning and zoning uh, chapters in uh, our code, uh, allow cities or counties to create tax increment districts. Uh, again, we use the uh, the kind of rough example, if you have a property that um, is sitting there undeveloped or is blighted as defined under the statutes worth uh, $100,000. Uh, and you have a developer come in that, that is interested in developing the area, um, can be through um, industrial, uh, Tiff, could be a commercial Tiff, or could be an affordable housing Tiff, um, that you could have any of those types of Tiff districts created. And if the value of the new uh, improvements within the district, uh, I just used an example in the outline, I gave you $2 million. Um, the tax on the original $100,000 would continue to be taxed and collected and distributed to the school district, city, um, and the other taxing entities um, within the district or within that, for that property. Uh, the additional value that is added through the development, and I used an example of $2 million, the taxes for those, that additional 200 or $2 million would be set aside into a special uh, Tiff fund, which goes to repay the costs of the infrastructure. So the, the improved improvements, um, the taxes that are generated from those improvements come back uh, to help pay for the infrastructure costs uh, that are involved in trying to uh, expand to uh, allow further development to, to move forward. So that's the, the general premise of how they work, is that uh, the improvements uh, generate additional taxes. Those taxes come back um, to repay the debt that is um, encouraged to uh, extend infrastructure or public improvements that uh, assist in the development of the area. Um, South Dakota law uh, allows for Tiff districts that, that don't have an impact on state aid to education formula. It's been something that's moved back and forth, and schools are, the primary beneficiaries, tax dollars. Um, it's all, it's very important to work with the school district and then not um, inform them of how the Tiff district will work. Um, if the Tiff district is for economic development, industrial, or affordable housing, uh, the state of South Dakota legislature has said, we will not count those Tiff revenues as local uh, effort, so the state will make up those tax dollars that would otherwise be going to the school. Um, if it is for some other purpose, um, the tax dollars that would otherwise go to the school would have to be spread out amongst the rest of the patrons within the school district. So when cities are being asked to create a Tiff, it's important to make sure that the um, that you have it for one of the three allowed purposes. Again, uh, industrial, economic development, or affordable housing, uh, where the patrons within Hartford or the West Central School District are not being asked to make up dollars which are lost in the state aid to education formula. In 2018, there were several changes made to the uh, Tiff statutes in South Dakota. One of those changes was to um, require cities or counties that are the ones developing a Tiff to uh, get a certification from the department of revenue in advance, so everyone knows going in that this project would qualify for one of those three purposes. And uh, again, the state aid to education formula would not uh, be negatively impacted for the school district or be spread out amongst the taxpayers within the school district. Two, uh, set up a Tiff district uh, is fairly straightforward. Um, the planning and zoning commission is required to um, identify an area which would be uh, outline the boundaries of the Tiff district. Um, they're required to have a public hearing about that. Uh, for that public hearing, you're required to notify the CEO of any taxing entity within the proposed Tiff district. So that could be the county, uh, school district, uh, the city, and then also the school board members, uh, which is unique to it. It's not just the CEO or the superintendent, but the uh, school board themselves have to be notified about the public hearing uh, for the creation of the Tiff district. Again, the public hearings held at the uh, planning and zoning level, um, they conduct a public hearing and then there are certain findings they need to make and make a recommendation to the city council to create a Tiff district. Um, and I won't get into the details of the, what their findings are, but it deals with the valuation of the property, their limits uh, with respect to assessed value of the community uh, that would be. I don't think anything you're looking at would be any concern for you. Um, there's a requirement that uh, 25% of the area in the district must be deemed blighted. Um, there's several definitions within uh, the Tiff statutes which define blighted, which are very broad. Um, I've not run into any Tiff districts where there's any issue um, trying to meet the definition of blighted area uh, for purposes of creation of the district. Um, so after the planning and zoning uh, puts forth their recommendation, it then comes before the city council who uh, would adopt a resolution creating the Tiff district, and it would define the boundaries uh, of that Tiff district. And then um, once you do that, you are able to notify the department of revenue, who then establishes what they call the tax base, which would be the base valuation for the district. And again, that base value would be the taxes that remain uh, going to the school district, city, county uh, on that base value. Any additional value that's created through the development then uh, would be the additional tax dollars that go into the Tiff fund to help retire uh, debt that's incurred for um, infrastructure or public improvements within the Tiff district. Once the district's created, uh, planning and zoning gets to go back to work and they work with the developer um, to put together a plan. And the plan, uh, again, by statute is required to have a number of items in it. It includes the type of uh, infrastructure that's uh, being proposed. Uh, most typical would be streets, water, sewer, extending those out to an area for development. Also have to have a um, economic impact on the study as part of that. So there are um, estimates as to what the additional value would be, what those taxes uh, would be generated and how that would apply to uh, paying off debt that would be incurred for the uh, public improvements. So there's, there's quite a bit of work that would be put together between uh, the city planning and zoning and the developer to identify uh, what improvements are going to be made and what um, tax dollars should be generated with those improvements and the time period allowed to repay that debt. Uh, Tiffs can be um, done for up to 20 years. Typically, they don't last quite that long. It just depends on the um, size of development, how much public improvement debt is incurred and how uh, how the tax dollars flow uh, once the development's completed. As part of that process, you'll have a development agreement so that you've got um, a developer committed to doing that, the Tiff project. Uh, that's important because if there's no additional taxes, there's nothing to repay the debt. So you've gotta have a commitment from your developer as to what they will be putting into the uh, Tiff district. Um, there's a couple of different ways to finance the Tiff. Um, they can be done through bonds issued by the city, where the city would actually incur the indebtedness. Um, technically paid for the improvements, and then as those tax dollars come back, um, the, the tax dollars are used to retire the debt. Um, more typical of what we see are what we've called developer Tiffs, where they pay the upfront costs. Uh, the funds then come back to the city, who's able to um, basically issue a grant to those, uh, to the developer who holds the debt. Um, and then repay that debt to the, uh, that the developer incurred for those public improvements that are identified in the Tiff plan. I don't, I met with Teresa and Karen last week, we talked a bit about that because with the projects you have coming, you need to be careful, make sure you're protecting your constitutional debt limits and would wanna make sure that um, you know, that you'd have room to do a Tiff if that's what's being requested. Uh, you just wanna be careful about uh, doing that to uh, have any negative impact on your ability to bond out projects that you foresee in the future. Again, they um, getting the school district involved, I think if, if the city's inclined to uh, work with the developer on uh, creating a Tiff, uh, it's important to get the school district involved so they understand the nuances of that and how that impacts them from a budgetary standpoint or uh, from a state aid to education standpoint. There are two, I, I read uh, as of October 2021, there are 214 active Tiff districts in the state. Um, the, with the redevelopment in Sioux Falls, for example, downtown, there's been a number of Tiff districts created um, where you'll see that um, old areas of town are being re, rehabilitated. Um, with the, the huge capital investment there, the city has um, entered into agreements with the developers to allow the taxes that um, that are uh, realized from the improvements to go repay some of those infrastructure debts. Again, Tiffs are one of the um, few economic development tools that you have uh, at your disposal that don't um, have a huge impact on the rest of the taxpayers uh, in the community because their, their taxes are not impacted by requiring uh, the school district primarily, they have to assess those dollars back against the rest of the patrons. The, the other, you know, a couple of the other advantages, if you do have uh, areas that are uh, restricted for growth, uh, the Tiff can open up some uh, big areas in town. I know the, the developers talked, Teresa's um, talked about maybe doing affordable housing type Tiffs, which um, could be a huge benefit for the school district if you've got something that would allow uh, working families to have uh, more affordable housing. The state sets, um, they have limitations on what they constitute as affordable housing for purposes of Tiff districts, so they're tied to income and uh, rent rates appropriate for the people of that income. I think they also, um, it can be, if there's gonna be single family housing, uh, the maximum value would be $300,000 that could be um, for new homes of that Tiff district, so. Um, there's a lot of detail work that needs to be worked on, but we just thought we'd uh, bring you an introduction to it and try and answer any questions you might have. Again, one of the planning and zoning members here because they'll be uh, frankly, as involved, they're more involved than you in the development of the Tiff district and the plan, if that's the, the direction you decide to go.
And Claire's month, right?
Claire's month.
Tom, and you've been, you've been involved with several Tiffs?
Yeah, I've probably done ten, twelve of them, I think, there's.
What, and, you know, I don't know that I was fully aware that um, basically they're reimbursing for the school districts for any of that lost, that lost tax revenue or how that, I guess I didn't realize how that mechanism worked.
Well, the, the, the state sets what they call local effort, and that's based upon your assessed value of your community, those, or the district. They say, this is what we consider your local effort, that you need to collect from your local patrons. And then anything above that in the state aid to education formula, which is based on dollars per student, um, then the state makes those up. And so they say any tax increment district for, again, industrial, economic development, or affordable housing does not count against your local effort, does not count as local effort. So the state will pick up those dollars um, in the state aid to education formula.
Sure.
Which is um, a big plus, you know, that can be some significant dollars when you start looking at some of the size of Tiffs. You know, some of those downtown Sioux Falls Tiffs were multi-million dollar, tens of millions of dollar projects, so.
So in state's eyes, that building don't exist for taxation?
Right, in, in terms, in terms of uh, school district, correct. Um, the city, that's not true for this, at city and county level, so um, it does defer the taxes that you would collect on those um, developments from the city and county standpoint. The state doesn't make those dollars up, but when education's what 60% of your property tax, um, that, that takes a bit of the bite out of it. You gotta look at it, it's taxes you don't have today, you're not gonna get tomorrow, but you might get in 10, 15 years once the Tiff paid off.
Is that typical, like, the Tiff is 10, 15 years?
That's the ones I've done, it's usually penciled out, but that's about right.
And by that time, the property will come back on a full tax basis.
They're fully taxed anyway. It's just where those tax dollars go. Yes, there would be taxes in the property or community, yes.
They're always paying tax, just depends on who's getting it.
Right, right.
So, Tom, is there a difference between affordable housing and workforce housing?
It's all under the same umbrella.
Okay.
Yeah. The statutes refer to it as affordable, but workforce housing is considered part of that, as long as it meets the income and rental requirements.
I was gonna say, when you talk to me and Karen, it's got a certain dollar amount.
I tried to get what that rental rate was from the state today, and they said the income requirements, not the rental requirements, but they did say it all. Sioux Falls metro area, which you would be a part of, it would be whatever those rates of the South Dakota housing is established for what they consider as an affordable housing, so.
Economic development seems like a very broad category.
It is, purposefully.
Right.
It used to say commercial, and the whole thing is
Yeah.
Been a roller coaster over the last 20 years, so.
Really give you some latitude.
The one area where, we talked a bit about this with Teresa and Karen, Hartford does have a discretionary tax formal, formula for new commercial or industrial or for, for commercial housing projects. Those, that discretionary formula can impact how many dollars are available for your infrastructure improvements, because when someone's only paying 20% of the tax in the first year, they're just not the tax dollars to pay off some of that debt. So, that's all part of the economic study that planning and zoning would work through with the developer, but sometimes developers are asked to waive the discretionary formula to make the TIF work, and get more bang for their buck, so.
What about just unsuccessful or TIFs where you've seen where the city or taxing entity is, wish they hadn't done it? What's that like?
I know Yankton, when they did the Fox Run Golf Course down there, that's probably 25 years ago now, I'm guessing. They took a lot of heat about doing that, and that was just local politics, but since then, they've done a number of TIFs.
Sure.
Because that was mostly residential, that's been a big rub of TIFs if it's for just typical single-family housing without limitations. And that's why they've, because of the need for affordable housing, that's been the reason that the state has said, "Okay, if it's gonna be affordable housing, we'll recognize that and assist with the TIFs," but not if it's just gonna be, you know, private development, the single-family homes without any restrictions on, on income or value of homes.
Sure.
The closest one they have that I know of is the ESPN building that you see on the south side of the interstate, just west of Mary Louie. That's their backup facility that they did a TIF to get, to assist with the infrastructure that was needed to get that building built. You're probably gonna, I think, eventually, you're kind of gonna be a coach about it. Just wanted to give you some background and introductory, so we'll play in the economic curve a little more when, if and when it does come before you later, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions from PZ?
Does your plan, when PZ gets involved, there's a matter to get started?
The developer asks for this, or do you?
The developer. Typically, the developer will come in and say they'd like to have the city consider that, and then go through the process of determining whether it's appropriate, whether it's a need for classification that would not hurt, hurt the school reform formula, and then what kind of dollars they're looking to invest for improvements that would be subject to tax. Typically, as part of that development, the financing part, work with the county assessor to say, "Okay, here's, here's the plans for the construction. Can you give us a ballpark range that you think that this market assessed at, based upon similar progress within the town?" And then that gives you some sanity as to what you're doing to try to make sure that the dollars will be there to repay the debt that would be incurred, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is it for agenda items. We do, I believe we'll need a motion for an executive session for economic development and personality. I have not heard anything really much, so.
Someone, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?